Good afternoon. Welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on the Vision Zero Annual Memo for today, April 8th, 2025. We have, we'll start off with our guests. If you all want to introduce yourselves and then I'll let you kick it off with your presentation.
Stephanie Gagni, Management Analyst for the city.
Angie Martinez, I'm Assistant Director with the city's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, or DOMI.
Panini Yaminjutri, Senior Planning Manager, Transportation with DOMI.
Takina Wai, Assistant Director of Public Safety.
Lisa Frank, I'm the city's Chief Operating Administrative Officer.
Matt Yanjeski, Director of Enforcement and Meter Services with Pittsburgh Parking Authority.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. All right, let me get started here. So, we are going to run through a presentation today talking about why we chose Vision Zero as our strategy to achieve zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries, what our commitment looks like, our first year, our intergovernmental working group, and Vision Zero Subcommittee, as well as 2025 and beyond. So, the reason we chose to commit to Vision Zero last year, Mayor Genie has been consistent that his North Star is making Pittsburgh the safest city in America. We can only do this by making sure this touches all aspects of public safety. So, on average, each year, 20 people are killed due to crashes and about 123 people are seriously injured. We know this number is unacceptable and the only acceptable number is zero. By committing to Vision Zero, we are committing to solving this problem through a holistic approach and establishing partnerships across sectors to solve this issue. So, as I mentioned, last March, Mayor Genie and Councilmember Warwick partnered to pass legislation that formally commits the city to Vision Zero. This legislation also directed departments to form an interdepartmental working group that we have now formed and we will get into a little bit later in this presentation. Pittsburgh now joins multiple other cities throughout the Commonwealth such as Bethlehem, Harrisburg, Lancaster, and Philadelphia in adopting Vision Zero. We are also joining cities from all across the United States as well as other countries. So, the purpose, oh, sorry. The purpose of our working group is to make sure we're eliminating interdepartmental and interagency barriers to collaboration so that we can design and implement engineering, educational, and enforcement solutions to ensure zero drivers, pedestrians, or cyclists are killed and seriously injured on our streets. We've established this working group with director-level leadership from various departments and agencies, including the mayor's office, city council, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, public safety, the police, Public Works, the Law Department, the Department of Innovation and Performance, the Office of Management and Budget, the Department of City Planning, Parking Authority, Allegheny County, PennDOT, Pittsburgh Regional Transit, and the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. So, as you can see, these are a vast leadership majority that we're working together to achieve Vision Zero. And this group really sets the vision and assigns work to representatives on more of a staff level in our Subcommittee so that they can work on things on a more day-to-day So, getting a little bit into each of our Subcommittee. One of the ones we knew we had to establish right off the bat was one dedicated to enforcement. So, as you can see, we have representatives from the mayor's office, council, OMB, DOMI, police, public safety, IMP, and the Parking Authority. One of the things that we really wanted to kick off immediately with this Subcommittee was automated red light enforcement. So, as of last fall, we had legislation introduced and passed that authorized automated red light enforcement at the local level. And we are currently in the process, the bid process, for selecting a vendor to launch that program this year. So, we'll be able to launch to multiple locations, see how that goes, and we will be joining other cities in the Commonwealth as well, like Philadelphia, who has shown that this kind of program can help to reduce crashes and especially fatal and serious injury crashes.
Just quickly, just to mention that we've been joined by Councilmember Mosley, so, thanks.
Thanks. We're also working on an education and enforcement program, partnering with our police, our Safer Together coordinators in public safety, as well as our zone councils, to look at the parking issues in particular of each neighborhood. So, for example, if you have a lot of sidewalk parking in your neighborhood, maybe people are parking on the ADA ramps. What we're doing for this particular program is going to be educating our neighbors first and foremost, because a lot of people don't understand that when you park on a sidewalk or you're blocking an ADA ramp, you are making it very unsafe for people walking, using mobility devices, as well as pushing strollers and things like that. So, we would like to start with educating before moving into partnering with our police to enforce, if necessary, and write tickets. We will also be starting to coordinate advocacy efforts at the state level for automated speed enforcement. That's something we'd really like to, that's something we would really like to be allowable by the state that currently isn't authorized for Pittsburgh. So, looking into what kind of advocacy efforts we need to do to make sure we have all tools in the toolbox for enforcement.
Oh, sorry, we've also been joined by Councilwoman Gross as well. Thank you.
Moving on to our next Subcommittee, we established a budget Subcommittee that includes members from the mayor's office, council, OMB, DOMI, and DCP. And a few things we've been working on in the budget Subcommittee in particular is around the grants process, working to improve the process internally, making sure that we have very simple things like a centralized SharePoint tracker for grants, that we are setting strict go or no-go deadlines so that we are being efficient and effective with our grant applications. We've also engaged DOMI's Complete Streets Advisory Group around the budget, and we will continue to do so. Last year, we engaged with them around the draft budget and they came back with recommendations for us, which was much appreciated. We've also been able to secure millions of dollars in funding for Vision Zero initiatives, whether through grants or through the regular operating and capital budgets for things like automated red light enforcement, sidewalks, and traffic calming. Our next Subcommittee that we established is Education Engagement and Communications. This one is probably our largest group with representatives from the mayor's office, council, OMB, DOMI, public safety, city planning, Allegheny County. We have been doing a number of initiatives through this Subcommittee. First and foremost, we wanted to engage students and their families. So, building upon DOMI's pre-existing Safe Routes to School program, we partnered with the Safe Routes to School Coordinator to create trifolds for Walk and Roll a School Day in the fall so that we could educate kids and their families about safe travel when they're getting to school, to and from school, as well as general road safety. So, some of our members of our committee were stationed outside those schools so that when parents were coming up to drop their kids off, we could have conversations with them and hand out information. We'll be continuing to do that in the spring as well and working with them during Safe Routes to School Safety Week, which happened just last month, to create Vision Zero pledges for the kids. We've also recently launched a community safety agreement, which is available on the Engage page, the Vision Zero Engage page, that commits residents and people traveling through our city to driving safely, following all traffic signals and stop signs, wearing your seatbelt. And that is paired with statistics about safe driving. So, people may not know that a majority of our crashes, or a decent number of our crashes, if not the majority, are caused by red light running. I think it's around 35%. So, things like that that bring light to the issue but also have an action item for people to take, to become further involved in Vision Zero and do their part. We're going to be continuing to work with the Complete Streets Advisory Group as they get up and running with their new member chair. We're going to use them as a sounding board as well for all of our work and initiatives. Our Community Ambassador Program is currently in progress. We are working to execute our Safe Streets for All Grant Agreement with federal DOT. So, once that is executed, we can begin that process of an RFP going out for our projects listed within that grant, as well as our Community Ambassador Program, which will be basically sending folks out to priority neighborhoods, making sure that that education piece is really being worked on in the neighborhoods that are most needed. We plan to launch a safe driver training for city staff. We are looking to make it required for staff that have to drive for their jobs. We are just starting that process now of what that would look like, but we'd also love to open it up to other staff who drive, just not for work, to make sure that we are all on the same page when it comes to traffic safety and driving safety. And finally, a community traffic calming toolkit. We'd like to work on this to empower residents to be able to make quick build, quick build traffic calming in their neighborhood. So, we have actively applied for a grant for this opportunity. We're waiting to hear back and depending on the results of that, we'll hopefully be looking into launching that this year.
And as you know, we're joined by Councilwoman Strausberger. Thanks.
Finally, our last Subcommittee includes the Fatal Crash Response Team. So, that includes a number of our departments, the mayor's office, the Police Collision Investigation Unit, DOMI, OMB, DPW, the SPC, and the county or PennDOT, depending on whose road it is. So, for this Subcommittee, it's a little bit different than the rest. We only meet when there is a fatal crash. Within two weeks of a fatal crash occurring, we'll go out and complete a site visit. And we have a standardized process. So, at those site visits, we have a questionnaire basically that we fill out and to make sure that the data that we are collecting for each fatal crash is consistent. We are making sure that we are communicating our updates on the Vision Zero Engage page in a formalized way, as well as our public safety information officers communicating each time a fatal crash occurs that our team will be going out and completing a site visit. Since the launch of this group, we've completed six site visits in 2024 and four so far in I just wanted to share a quick example because I think it's easier to understand when you have visuals. So, this is one of the ones we did early last year, early on in our process, at the Boulevard of the Allies in Marion Street, just down the street from us. We had two fatal crashes here last year. And as you can see on the left-hand side, that is the before. So, you can see that left turn lane, that's actually an emergency-only lane. And you, there is signage up, but the pavement markings only showed just a white diamond, which may have been confusing to folks. So, what we did was work with PennDOT because it's their road, and we worked with them to get some yellow hatching to make it very clear that you should not be using this left turn lane as a turn lane or a turnaround. And we got increased signage up and we haven't seen any fatal crashes since. This is also just a local example of Paulson and Rowan Street. We had seen a fatal crash here, somebody driving, we believe that he may not have known there was a curve. So, what we did was make sure that there was signage there to really make clear that you need to slow down, do not speed through this intersection because there is a curve ahead. So, just making like simple fixes can make it much safer for people. Just to sum up, last year, which was year one of the initiative, we did see a decrease in traffic fatalities last year with 17 total fatal crashes. Like I said, we know this number is 17 too many, it needs to be zero, but we're hoping this is on the right track. And we know that the work is just beginning and it's not going to happen overnight, but we feel we are making progress breaking down barriers to coordination and we're looking forward to further collaboration with agencies, organizations, and community members to achieve our goal. Going into a little bit about our upcoming goals, we will be hosting a Vision Zero Summit, a one-day summit with Bike Pittsburgh in fall of 2025, which we're really looking forward to. This will be a great opportunity for people to come out and learn more about the work we're doing and help kind of plan for the year ahead. We'll be working on drafting and submitting a Vision Zero budget ask for 2026 that's cross-departmental, so it's not all just going to come from one department because this is truly a cross-departmental issue. We'll be expanding the reach of the Fatal Crash Response Group by reviewing serious injury crashes in high-crash police zones, starting with Zone 2, with the intent to expand citywide. So, making sure we're solving for the problem of that data lag by meeting on a more quarterly basis with commanders who can tell us what's going on in their zones. And finally, we'd like to establish a Subcommittee that is focused on policy and legislative priorities so that we can make sure we're doing everything in our power to create safer streets in Pittsburgh. So, we do have the memo up on the Vision Zero Engage page along with our Community Safety Agreement, which we encourage everybody listening to fill out. And I believe the memo will outline all of our action items, they are color-coded, and we do have a majority of them that are either completed or on track for 2025. And for the rest of them, we're looking forward to getting those on their way. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone else have anything to add before we move to questions from members? No? Okay.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for being here today. Thank you for that very detailed presentation. My first question is, you know, whether here locally or nationally, are there, you know, successful examples and best practices around education and advocacy programs? The reason why I ask that question, you know, as Angie knows, I constantly are sending emails over to DOMI from the numerous traffic calming requests we get from residents all over the city. And I know there used to be the old saying, you know, everybody, you know, wants a chicken in every pot and a cop on every block. I think nowadays, everybody wants a speed bump on their street. And we know that, you know, it's just not conceivable to have a speed bump on every single street. And, you know, we can only do so much from where we sit to manage people's driving, you know, behavior. And I try to get that across, you know, to our residents. I just got an email actually this morning about a near accident over in the Friendship Community where, you know, someone was speeding and almost hit a family. And I know that, you know, as much as we would love to be able to do traffic calming on every single block in the entire city, we just know that's not reality. But can you speak to, or, you know, you or anyone else on the panel can speak to successful education and advocacy programs that have shown to change behavior over time? Because unless people, you know, drive more responsibly, there's only so much that we can do around traffic calming interventions we can make.
I'd like to go ahead and start to address that comment. So, this is Angie with DOMI, and I have to say, exactly. So, that is why we are doing a Vision Zero Initiative, because we know that roadway safety is not going to be end-all, be-all roadway design or infrastructure solutions. We know that we have to get at the behavior of everyone, whether they are driving, whether they are walking, using a mobility-assisted device, or on a bike or other sort of, you know, conveyance. And so, I think we did look at best practices and what we've seen, and we are by no means the first city to do a Vision's Era program. I think we have actually really benefited in some ways from coming along a little bit later in the game. We've seen, you know, these policies and programs take root nationally, internationally, and even within the state of Pennsylvania. So, we're here to really say, these things work, safety can't wait. From the DOMI perspective, we need residents, visitors, everybody in the city of Pittsburgh to understand the importance of roadway safety and rules of the roads, but we also want them to drive with compassion and to think about other, the experience of others as they're moving through our city. And the only way we're going to accomplish that is by working holistically and beyond just a Department of Transportation. So, I have been so gratified and really pleased with, I think, the diversity of representation we've had from various city and external departments. You know, having our Safer Together coordinators who receive a lot of those same 3-1-1s that ultimately come to DOMI, having Parking Authority who's got the sort of enforcement capacity and has to deal with, you know, processing violations for some of these types of behaviors, really starts with getting everybody in the room and understanding what our respective roles are. And then, I think, more outlets like this so that members of council and by extension, the public can see the work that we're doing, that we're collaborating, that we know the solutions go beyond just in small speed humps. And so, we've, we plan on doing a number of behavioral or more education campaigns. One of the ones that I was able to take a part of this year was the Safety Pledge that our Education and Communications Committee put together with Harriet Jackson, who's our Safe Routes to School Coordinator. We were at Propel Northside for Safety Week, talking to, I believe it was, fifth graders. And we walked them through the Safety Pledge, and they all signed the pledge and got a sticker that they would, you know, follow the rules of the road and look out for others. So, that Safety Pledge would not have happened, we would not have had that material to present to our Northside Propel scholars if Vision Zero hadn't convened, if we weren't able to use both our Education Committee and our Complete Streets Advisory Group as external reviewers of the materials. So, that, I think, is just one example of something that we were able to do sort of on the education piece. And if there's anything that anyone else wants to add.
But Panini, you go first.
Councilwoman, to answer your question, yes, education is a proven safety countermeasure. So, we actually have a National Highway Transportation Safety NHTSA. They do a lot of research on that. And what they have seen is whenever we do targeted education, it works. And that's pretty much what we are trying to do here. But the goal is you have to identify that focus group that you're going for that education particular, and the messaging needs to be very clear and focused. If we can follow that, yes, those education campaign, number of cities in California and also in Maryland, they actually have seen decrease in their crashes just by safety campaign and awareness creating around school parks, that type of scenario.
I also like the things in the plan that maybe don't jump out as education campaigns but that I think would help as education campaigns. I mean, I think one of the things that I've often been struck by is the kind of difference in, what shall I say, community, I'm trying to think of the right word here. When you talk to people in our neighborhoods about gun violence and, right, the community has a pretty high level of education about that and a pretty high level of wanting to engage and to think about that themselves and so on and so forth, right? It's a little bit different, I think, still with crashes. I mean, Lee told me, like, 90% of roadway fatalities happen between a person and somebody who lives really close by to them, really close by. I don't think that's really in the consciousness of people who live in our neighborhoods and who drive the cars, right? So, there's a difference in the feeling about whether it's a community problem or not. And so, one of the things that I like that's in this plan are the, are the community intervention. I've forgotten what you call them exactly, but I can put a planter on the corner here, right? I can, maybe we're waiting for DOMI or whoever to do a speed bump, but in the meantime, we can do what's in the toolkit to make the corners less blind, to do those kinds of things. And I think of that as much as anything. It will also prevent roadway crashes, but it's also a way for a councilperson to get out into their neighborhood and say, let's do a thing here, let's get people invested in community road safety, which I also think will then start to penetrate people's consciousness in a way that is a little bit different than saying to a particular driver, hey, slow down.
Thank you for that. I just have a couple of other questions. My next question was about just getting a little bit more insight on the collaboration, you know, with the state and PennDOT. I know in the past, you know, there's been a perception that, you know, it's difficult. I actually had a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor last time I was in Harrisburg and we had, had a conversation, you know, with PennDOT about traffic calming on state roads. It's an issue that I talk about a lot with Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strausberger because we share so many state roads, whether it's, you know, Penn Avenue or Fifth Avenue between District 7, 8, and 9. And I had a really great conversation. I sent them over a spreadsheet of state roads that were, you know, in the city that have been an issue, and they're taking a look at that. But I would like to hear more about, you know, ways that, you know, we could work closer, you know, with PennDOT because so many of our primary roads in the city are state roads. And, you know, I get calls from constituents, oh, why can't, you know, we, you know, put speed bumps all down Penn Avenue between Braddock and Fifth Avenue, like, state road, like, we can't, you know? So, I would love to hear more about the collaboration with the state and how us as councilmembers can be helpful in that, particularly going to Harrisburg and advocating on our behalf.
Councilman, you brought out the elephant in the room. So, state route, we have only 12% state route in our city roadway, the boundary, and they are responsible closely nearly half of the crash that happen every year in the city. Five of our top 10 high severity crash corridor that we have, these are all state-owned. In the last couple of years, we actually did make some really good progress when coordinating with the state, especially, you know, the Safe Street for All Grant played a huge role. We are partnering with the state and also the county to develop our first Allegheny County Safety Action Plan. And that also create our partners in the MPO, Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. They have started another regional safety action plan. Whenever you create this type of avenue, that's where you get to have those discussions, talk about whatever going on in the each side and what type of issue they are having on their side. The way we can operate, unfortunately, for our state partners, they have to cross a lot more red tape to make those things work. And also, the way we envision the project, it can be low-cost, quick build, just a flex post and paintwork. When they're addressing their state road, it's really difficult to bring the safety benefit just by flex post for a state road. Simply, you have a very high volume. So, this type of measure doesn't work. So, whenever they try to undertake their corridor, it gets really expensive, they have to go through a lot of red tape procedure, they have a lot of oversight and process that needs to go through. So, that's where a lot of hangup happen. But Stephanie already brought up that they are, you know, a Fatal Crash Response Team, and we're really glad the way they're collaborating with us. Things are getting better. We get to create number of avenue through these plans where we get to talk with each other, understand how we can support each other. But the truth of the matter is there's still a long way to go on that avenue.
One more thought. I think where we're, where we're making good progress is also on the what is not yet built with PennDOT. So, we've got this existing set of roadways and, you know, I think, I think probably none of our roads were really built with safety in mind first, whether we built them or PennDOT built them. That's not what people were thinking about, it is what people are thinking about now. And so, I, the conversations with PennDOT where I feel like, all right, you know, we're getting somewhere, is when, you know, maybe PennDOT will say, what if we added a lane here? That would reduce congestion. And of course, we immediately think, nah. And of course, we immediately think, nah, that would increase speed. And, you know, that we can have those conversations and we can say, listen, how bad is the congestion? Like, what are you really talking about here? Because every time you let people go faster, we know what's going to happen. And there's a real openness, I think, there, as there is a real openness to building, you know, multimodal facilities into their projects and so on. So I think there's the, trying to correct for the errors of the past, which is, as Pinny's saying, pretty tricky, or, you know, it's, there's a lot of hurdles that we have to get through. And then there's the, what are we doing going forward? And I think there, we've made a tremendous amount of progress with PennDOT.
And you said, what's the percentage of crashes that are attributed to state roads?
So 12% roadway responsible for nearly half of the total crash. Year to year, it bounced from 44% to 48%, which year you're looking at.
Wow, thank you. And my final question was, I know it was shared on your slide deck that last year it was 17 crashes. What was, and it said it was a decrease. What was it down from? What was the prior number?
So in 2023, it was 20. 2022 had been the highest for the last couple of years with 24.
Okay. Thank you. That's also my questions, Chair.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I don't have that many questions. I am grateful for the work that you're doing. I appreciate that we have got people kind of across multiple departments here that are working on the collaborative. So to have set the goal, to have convened the right people at the table, it seems like we're already seeing results. We all know that we have a backlog of traffic calming requests, right? I always like to give a shout out to the constituents of District 7, when back in 2018, not only did they, many, many years ago, have the kind of first trial speed humps on the alley part of Goldway, which was preceded by time on council, but then we kind of, we got the newer speed bumps, I think, that are, that were kind of the first ones that DOMI had done, on both on Melwood and then following up that on Edmond and Bloomfield. And that was, you know, a concerted consensus building kind of exercise with DOMI, that the constituents were very, very clear that they wanted. And I think it might even have been on the record, when we were discussing it at the table here, councilmembers were like, that's, you're crazy, you know, you shouldn't do that. People will hate it. But as we see, my constituents were right, you know, sometimes you gotta let the people lead. And now we have those requests coming from all across the city. But it is, I do appreciate that you're pairing that with the kind of communications and education, because people really just, they really need to slow down. And we would have a lot less fatalities, certainly less injuries, and not have to do so much of the infrastructure changes if people would just drive slowly. So I applaud all of your work. I don't have any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all, and apologies for walking in late, but I think I've, I've read the memo and I, or I was reviewing it, and I think I know a lot of what's in here. It's been a pleasure to have my office take part in the Vision Zero Task Force as much as we can, and really grateful to your work for, especially the multi, kind of disciplinary, multi-departmental nature of it is the thing that makes it work. I've seen when it's, you know, when it preceded DOMI, when it was like just DPW, like one person, and then it was just DOMI, and then you weren't really syncing up Public Safety and Parking Authority with DOMI. It really is the thing that makes the difference. I saw that in person while attending one of, unfortunately, attending one of the fatal crash response team meetups. And even just kind of daylighting for multiple people who don't spend a lot of time in like the upper Pitt campus, you know, upper Oakland area, realizing, oh my gosh, this is probably the busiest area of the city traffic-wise at 5:30 in the morning. Like, okay, let's really focus on this. Let's really take this seriously, and let's work with our partners at Pitt, and let's work with UPMC on, you know, their hospital entrances. And it really kind of just highlighted for me how important the multi-departmental part of this is. So really grateful. And I mean, I don't have too many questions either. I think we're all on the right track here. I am curious, though, like, when do we expect the pilot program, the pilot program around, oh, red light, I think I understand, around neighbors, residents, kind of doing their own interventions and having that ready to roll out? Because I, while, while I think that, you know, the plus side of the fatal crash response team is to be able to focus in on a really harmful area and make almost immediate upgrades while we're telling them we have long-term upgrades to make that might cost a little bit more. The hard part is this nature of everyone has an issue on their street or in their neighborhood and don't feel like they have the power to take action or do anything. It's like they're at the mercy of where they are on the list and if it's approved by, you know, the growing, the overburdened staff, because we have this growing list of areas that people are concerned about. So, yeah, when, when will they be able to take action by putting the planter there or following the instructions to do that?
Yeah, so in terms of the kind of enforcement combination, I can also address the other one, but for the education and enforcement, I'm working on getting scheduled at all the Zone Council meetings. So I actually did attend Zone 4, which was great.
Yes, I heard it was great.
And, yeah, so we're working on drafting materials based on people's needs for them to be able to hand out and flyer and put on cars. And we have, like, Zone 4 Commander is on board, so we're gonna hopefully launch in the next month or so. The sooner the better. And then in terms of that traffic, community traffic calming, we are waiting back to hear from a grant. So if we do get that grant funding, we can kind of roll that process more quickly. If not, we will reevaluate and see what we can do in the short term. But that is still kind of on the table for this year.
Okay. I do think that's going to be the difference maker in terms of, like, people feeling like, okay, I realize that there's a long wait, or maybe they don't know there's a long wait, but we usually tell them, like, yes, this is one of, even just 50 in one district alone, you know, we're really working with you and as hard as we can. And, you know, they can do something in the meantime, so.
I think that we've heard loud and clear that there's interest in this community or resident-based neighborhood traffic calming toolkit. I think the act of putting together a grant proposal really helped us sort of put pen to paper of what that would look like. So I'm hopeful that even if we don't get a grant, there's gonna be, this grant that we applied for, there will be other opportunities. But yes, having to discuss, you know, what does an application process look like, what are, somebody still needs to review, say yes or no, there's a question of liability and who carries it. There's quite a number of things that have to get sorted, the cost of materials, you know, where we store them, how we purchase them. Laying the groundwork through this grant proposal, I think, was really beneficial. And it came together truly through the Vision Zero Working Group. We had to rely heavily on Stephanie to pull together that proposal, so.
This probably all goes without saying, but the, the point at which our law department became comfortable with it and DPW became comfortable with it. So DPW just wants to be sure that what people are building is, doesn't create additional hazards, or, you know, can, doesn't melt the first time it rains, or, you know, they, they have some specifications. So if a planter, then the planter should be like this, if, should be like this. And I think they're, they're kind of putting those specs together, which I think will help clarify for everybody. And then, you know, and then we need to, I think we have actually figured out, so once it's in the right of way, it's ours. And, and people probably need to understand that a little bit about it as well, because if it turns out it is creating more of a hazard, or it's not up to spec, or it does melt when it rains or something, we probably have to go in and take it out or something. So we're gonna need to do some education with people about how together we're managing, we're creating more safety, but we have to make sure we're not creating additional risk, and we're kind of owning this project together. Because I, we want people to do it, and we want them also not to get, like, super upset if we say, you know, we gotta back this thing up eight inches, because it's, so we're gonna, you know, we're really gonna have to collaborate on these, but I think it's gonna be fantastic.
Yeah, and even having neighborhoods collaborate with other neighborhoods, because I'm thinking back to the early days of the pandemic and the play, like, the play streets, and we had the sandwich boards, and we gave them out, and designated play streets, and people loved that. And then we're really upset when we sort of decommissioned that program because it wasn't needed anymore. And so like, the expectations on the front end as well, along with, you know, how permanent or how temporary these might be. Yeah, it's all very complicated, but, okay. But will, I think, ultimately be a great thing. And, no, I don't, I don't have any other questions. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so, yeah, thank you all, you know, for being here. I just think, generally speaking, you know, when we talk about traffic calming, this issue, it has all been on the shoulders of DOMI for a long time. I don't know if we have numbers on how many projects we've done around the city. I know it's, it's a lot. I don't know, Angie, if you have any?
Dozens a year.
Dozens a year. And in addition, we do signal, signal replacement and signal adjustment projects, too. So, you know, lots of work, very expensive work being done all over the city. And, you know, there's always some frustration, I think, for some residents with traffic calming, anything that's new, you know, and folks who aren't, you know, the folks who've lived here for a long time, they're like, well, why do we, you know what I mean? This doesn't, I don't need this, like, I'm a good driver, you know? But it's, it's different now, right? Cars are significantly bigger, significantly bigger. People are on their phones, so distracted in a way that we haven't seen before. Speeding, I don't know, I always sort of challenge myself sometimes, you know, like, if you drive the speed limit like 25 miles an hour, it feels very slow. Like, you're like, oh, wow, I'm going really slow. But that's, you know? And, and also, we have a lot more vulnerable road users, right? All kinds of folks now who are biking and e-bikes, and people have their kids on bikes, and, you know what I mean? And, you know, folks walking in here and there. So I think that's important to keep in mind. I will say, just to sort of shout out to DOMI, you know, I really do love the data-driven You know, I think in the, in past years, it, and I notice it myself, too, like, you'll sort of, you'll see, you know, early, early investments in traffic calming were sort of like, maybe it was a little bit more of a squeaky wheel approach. So you'll sort of be in a neighborhood and you'll see like half a million dollars of infrastructure on a little tiny, you know, intersection. And it's like, oh, man, this could have been, how many speed bumps, like, in other places? So, you know, I'm grateful that you guys are taking that date, you know, on the high-injury network, Safer Routes to School. That's, that's what we should be doing, and that's just to also remind folks when they are asking for speed humps, that's, that's how we're doing it, right? We're doing it based on, on the need. Actually, one, Donna McManus, would you want to come up to the table? Because I know that crossing guards are a big part, and I know lots of folks have some questions on, on crossing guards. So that, that is kind of my, my, my first question would be, you know, what is the crossing guards? Because I know I have requests for crossing guards at big intersections in Squirrel Hill, in Hazelwood, we're hiring, things are a little bit different. And what can you, what can you tell us about sort of how things are going in the crossing guard world?
The crossing guards are hiring, so anybody across the city can apply. You need to live in the city. We also get requests for crossing guards, but we go out and evaluate the intersection. Things like the amount of students that intersection serves, safety issues, pluses and minuses to safety, is it a stop sign? Is it, is it a, an intersection where there's a light signal? Or is it just a crosswalk? I'll give you some examples. South Dallas and Edgerton, you only have a crosswalk to get kids across that street, and those people speed on that street, speed. So that would be an intersection that, you know, we look at. There's some other ones that we're working with DOMI where we definitely need to have somebody up there. And as soon as we can either reallocate some resources, meaning some of our people, or bring new people on, there's intersections that are on the list that we'll be getting a crossing guard as soon as we get people in. So it's a process, it is, and sometimes it takes longer than what some people would like. You know, they think they can snap your fingers and you get a crossing guard, but it's a little bit more extensive than that. But the safety of the children in this city is, is most important. And part of it is also teaching young people and adults, this is gonna sound so just basic, but crossing the street. I'm usually out all over the city, whether it's special events or just engaging with people. And the amount of people that I see that cross against a light while they're holding their child's hand is unacceptable. And, and it's interesting, because I have these discussions with the people in this building, because I am here a lot, down here at the City-City Building, and I'm at Fourth and Grant, and I'm probably the only person that stands there and waits to get the walk sign. And I do that on purpose, because you never know who's watching you. There could be people on a school bus, and it doesn't have to be downtown, it could be anywhere, Penn Avenue. There's people, there's young people on school buses that are always watching everything we do. So it's time for, for everybody in this city, adults, it starts with adults, to model the behavior that we want our children to emulate in when it comes to safety in crossing the streets. So.
And I know that there was some chatter, and I remember seeing a news report, something, and I don't know if this has, is, but a ticketing system, like, if you're, if you're going around the, like, if the, you know, the bus has the stop sign. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
Also, could you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm Donna McManus. I'm the supervisor for the City of Pittsburgh Crossing Guards. Pittsburgh Public Schools implemented a, a program where they have cameras on the buses, where the camera is on the stop arm that comes out. And they implemented it about a year and a half ago, and people were getting tickets. They told everybody that this was gonna happen, and folks were getting tickets, and they were all upset, and there was something about the processing of it. And that was changed. So I believe Penn, PennDOT, I think, is who is taking care of the tickets. And Pittsburgh Public Schools just put out, about a month ago, they issued 9,000, 9,000 tickets just for going through bus lights.
How much is that ticket, do we know?
I believe it's $300. $300. But there's no points on the license, though. But they had people who went and disputed it, and I believe 8,100 tickets were valid, and they're paying them. So it really is a nice program where people think that they don't go around the bus. And my people call me when they have cars going around the buses, and then I send the information over to Pittsburgh Public Schools with a time, a location, and the bus number. And that way, it makes it easier for Pittsburgh Public to pull it up on their camera. But I, probably weekly, I have guards who call and say there's people going through bus lights in intersections, which is also unacceptable.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so for the red light cameras, do we have locations identified, or does it change? Can they move around? How does that, just, how's that gonna work?
So briefly, for the, our planned automated red light enforcement program, we're looking for a fixed unit system, so the locations are not gonna change. There's a lot of reasons for that, but, you know, it's the cost, it's that they have to be properly signed, it's that they have to be properly advertised. There's a 60 or 90-day warning period at each new location where we can't actually assess a citation. So they'll, they'll stay in one location. And the second question is, have we identified locations? The answer to that is, we've identified locations in collaboration with PennDOT, potential locations based on crash, crash factors and, you know, other requirements of the RLE program. And we will wait to finalize those locations, though, until we have a vendor in place, because there's certain speed studies that we'll want to have, or not speed studies, certain traffic studies that we'll want to have complete at those locations before we actually install cameras. So all that to say, we have an idea, but we do not have the locations identified yet.
Sure. Councilwoman, you have a follow?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I was gonna just follow up with one of our school, the school and the school bus conversation for a minute. I think it was in the Complete Streets post agenda, which might have been a year ago, might have been two years ago. might have been two years ago, I can't even remember now, when we were talking a little bit about the metrics and how we prioritize, that I asked if we were not only prioritizing where physical schools are for kids who are walking to school, but most of our kids don't actually walk to school, and they take this buses, right? Especially the younger kids are taking the, the PPS buses. And even though it changes from year to year, because the location of the PPS bus stops change, and which schools are picked up when, and how many kids are going to a particular corner changes, I asked, I think, that we request that information from PPS. I think that's gotten a lot better. It used to be that was very hard to get. And then, look at those as a higher ranking, because the safety of kids walking to their school bus stop should also be, I think, high in the priority area. There are certainly school bus stops that have something like two and a half hours of pickups in the morning, and two and a half hours of drop-offs in the afternoon. And one of these, years ago, it may have changed, was Heron and Melwood in Polish Hill, because it was 16 different school buses going to that corner every morning and every afternoon. And it was unsafe, especially when we were having Bigelow Boulevard construction and people were using the alternate detour, unofficial detour route, and, and, and driving at high speeds on Melwood and on Heron. And so similarly, I can think of school bus stops in my districts where, like, you know, we've had to push over the years to get even striping for crosswalks. There weren't even crosswalks, and there was, you know, two hours of little kids, you know, and you, you have to walk your little kids to the school bus, because it's not safe to even go to the, the bus stop. So, if we haven't gotten to that level, I think that needs to be added for the Vision Zero Task Force, right? To look at where those school bus stops are, and what are the routes to bus stops. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And, so, yeah, with regard to the sort of education engagement, so it sounds like we're working with Propel. Are, are we working with PPS as well? For the, is that like getting inside the classroom and talk, because-
Yeah, so our Safe Routes to School Coordinator maintains relationships with PPS, as well as some of the Magnet and other charter schools. And, yeah, it's primarily around getting those schools to participate in programs such as Safety Week, Walk and Roll to School Week. Our Safe Routes to School Coordinator, I think, has a great, has built great relationships to public safety, Donna is nodding her head, to our Traffic Division. She really, she serves a role whose entire purpose is to make sure that students can get safely to school regardless of how they are traveling. And so, as part of that role, I think she almost provides a sort of, you know, liaison sort of service to try to solve with the schools the types of issues that they bring to us. Agree absolutely, we can still be doing more. I think our students in Pittsburgh are facing a tremendous uphill battle when it comes to transportation, especially in light of some of the changes that could happen to PRT. This was a challenge that we were hearing from our schools, even before PRT announced these potential cuts, is that there was already, you know, concerns about students having to find the bus, wait for the bus, catch, catch the bus, in some cases, transfer. So we've already been working to try to add more sort of multimodal training, how to use the bus, for students, because they're, they're being put in this position of having-
PPS buses.
Yeah, the PPS buses, yeah, PPS transportation changes. So, yes, all that to say, children are our most vulnerable users, and I think to draw back to the point earlier about how important behavior and sort of consciousness is, we're also, through our Safe Routes to School work, training the next generation of drivers, cyclists, everything. So the more I think that we treat those children with the compassion and, you know, the, the level of safety which they absolutely deserve, and foster sort of, sort of respect for them and each other. I hope that, you know, we start to see that pay off as they, they get older. And we do hope to expand our Safe Routes to School program to also be working within some of the, the higher level grades. So I think, at this point, we've only gone up to eighth grade. We aspire to get into high school classrooms, to also start to talk to students about, who might be approaching driving age.
Great, great. I always, like, fifth and sixth graders is a good, that's like the sweet spot, where they learn something and then they tell their parents what they're doing wrong.
And they're also looking-
That is my experience.
And they're also looking for independence, and I think movement and mobility is a form of independence. And, you know, in a city where you might have to take the bus to school or find your own way to after-school program, you know, I hope that we're making transit, cycling, you know, those options for non-drivers because of age, comfortable, health, healthy and, and safe.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. So, and then just quickly, so with the community traffic calming toolkit, and I understand that we're waiting on a grant, so, I mean, is this, are we kind of talking about creating, like, a, sort of like a menu? Like, you'd apply for an encroachment permit, and these, this would kind of be like the menu, where it's like, if you do this, it should be quick? Is that, is that the idea?
Yeah, we'd like to get to a point where there's a sort of menu of options and treatments, where they might be accessible, or acceptable, and then, of course, the internal process for how those requests would be submitted to the city for review. So, yes.
Great, yeah. And I, I mean, I think that would be so nice, because they're so, I mean, I've had, even just little things, like folks who park up to the edge of the curb, right, and, and you can't see out, and it's just, and it's, it's very frustrating for residents to feel like, "Well, I can't just put a flex post in there," and it's just, they, it's hard to understand the amount of sort of time and engineering that it goes into, but if, if they could just do that quickly themselves, I think that would make things a, a lot easier. So definitely looking forward to that. I do have a question, so I've no, I, I see we have Parking Authority here, we don't have the Bureau of Police, but I, I am curious about the enforcement. So, prior to Chief Ragland, I know that he was very active on, in, in the Vision Zero team, and I know that in Zone Four, with Commander Vannanski, we're doing a pilot to have, like, dedicated officers in a neighborhood and have that kind of move around. I, I'm curious if we have an update on that, and I would also, if there's, I would love to see numbers, too. Like, not that I, I know we're trying to change behaviors, but I also want to know how many tickets we're giving out.
Um, myself and Commander Ripple have been on the Vision Zero Subcommittee for Enforcement. One of the things that we are bringing about is, we looked at some data from our data analysts in reference to pedestrian strikes and things of that nature, serious injuries. And with that, we took the, the palette will come for the, the zone that had the most pedestrian strikes, which was Zone Two. So we, in the future, will roll that out, quarterly meeting, to see what we can do to stop the pedestrian strikes. We will go over each report from the Police Department, and through those reports, we'll see, we'll all have a input on how we can do better enforcement in those areas, and what things, what measures we can put in place to stop those strikes.
Yeah, because, I mean, I really would like, I mean, I, I feel like, as a driver in Pittsburgh, you kind of feel like anything, like, you're never going to get a ticket, right? Like, it would, it'd just be almost unheard, I mean, occasionally, right? But it's almost unheard of that you see a, a police car, you know, and, and I think that if folks kind of knew that you never know, if that were the vibe, then people would stop at the stop sign, or like, you know, slow down a little bit. So that would be great, to see sort of all of our officers trained. Like, if you're out and you're not on a call, you're actually actively, you know, out, you know, whether it's at a stop sign, or, or whether it's a presence, or you're actually doing some kind of enforcement. That would be great. Yeah, and, yeah, the fatal crash response team, thank you for the examples. I think that that was very helpful, to see those. I do, I do have one, so this is specific to my district. So there was a fatal crash on St. Patrick's Day. It was a head-on collision, it was a drunk-driving incident. And the fatal crash response team came out to look, and, and by the way, I think that that, I, I can't remember if it was Commander Vannanski, but one, one of, sort of described how going out together, like, with DOMI was, was so helpful, because normally, it's like, "Okay, you just go out, okay, who hit who, whatever, write the report," but to actually have, like, the traffic engineer being like, "Oh, my gosh, look at this, like, you know, this is why," I want, you know, and figuring out why the crash happened. But for the Beechwood and Loretta, so, one of the things that came out of that fatal crash response visit was to elim- was to move a bus stop up to a signaled intersection and eliminate a, a dangerous crosswalk. And I just wanted to give you all the chance to clarify, because I know on Facebook, some people are like, "What? That's not, that's not, it has nothing to do with-" and, correct, it doesn't have anything to do with the crash at hand, but I wanted to let you all explain how, how that came about.
Absolutely. Before getting into the nitty-gritty detail, I just want to give a big shout out to Detective Wolf, who actually helped us to go through all those crashes, and it was immensely helpful for us along the way. A little bit background, how does fatal crash response work? So, we do mostly not only reactive, we also try to be proactive whenever we look for those responses. And the other thing is, we try to do low-cost, quick-build projects that can be designed in-house and can be built in-house. For that particular matter, Councilwoman, that crash happened somewhere around 8:30, 9 o'clock at night. The individual was under the influence. They basically crossed the central lane and hit on the other side, and that's where the fatality happened. So, between 2019 and 2023, we have over 4,000 crash due to DUI. One in every five crash that happen in our city regarding DUI, and one in every five fatalities that happen in our city regarding DUI. So, that particular incident, when we went there and Detective Wolf helped us to walk us through how that crash happened, it doesn't look like roadway factor actually played any major role to have that crash. So, from the reactive side, from the local's viewpoint, from the city's side, how we can stop alcohol abuse DUI? You know, so, so the, the toolkit that we have with our hand, we don't necessarily have any toolkit to address the issue that we have, is the alcohol abuse. The individual didn't mention they have any issue in the roadway condition, the individual didn't mention that the central line wasn't clear enough, there wasn't enough lighting in there. So, the, the individual didn't necessarily mention that roadway actually played any role to, that can prevent that crash to happen. Now, there are some other toolkit that we could have used for a lane departure type of crash, but the problem is, that corridor has close to 29,000 traffic, and close to eight-person truck traffic. The thing that you can do, this type of lane departure from the central line, is whether you can harden the central line, it can be rumble strip, but you can do that, that's a residential corridor. 3:00 in the morning, a free trailer hitting that rumble strip, it isn't going to be a fun experience. We could have tried to put a flex post in there for 29,000 traffic in the middle of a two-feet, basically, space that we have, that thing doesn't want to last either. So, as you can see, when you're thinking about the process of the reactive side, there isn't anything, actually, we could have done that could have prevented that crash. So that brings you to the next point, is how you can proactive. So that's when we see that, we have that crosswalk, that really sad crosswalk between two signal, 29,000 traffic, four-lane roadway, really fast, there is no way you can make that crossing safer. We also looked into the PRT data, we wanted to be, make sure that we are not taking out any crossing which is heavily used, the ridership is 0.7, not even a whole human being, part daily. It's like a three-day, maybe one or two people cross, you do the average, that's how it end up being 0.7. So that crossing has also been, like, a heavily utilized to begin with. So, the only low-cost response we had on that point, to make sure that no one is using that corridor, because we are seeing that's a safety concern, right there, that we can solve with the toolkit that we have, in a quick-response time that we have. And that is the reason we took out that crossing and put it on the signal section that we have. That doesn't mean that that crossing isn't needed, but the problem is, at this moment, the resource that we have, we won't be able to deploy anything that actually worked and improved that scenario. But the good thing is, the I-376 project is coming in, in there, Squirrel Interchange, and there will be some changes coming in the upstream of Beechwood Boulevard. So when that project gets in, maybe it will give us some more opportunity to better understand how that corridor works, whether we can do something more expensive, like a road tight type of scenario, instead of for making two lanes. So when we get into those timelines, yes, that will give us more resources to work with and figure out how we can make that crossing safer. But at this moment, the only proactive thing we can do to make sure that we don't have to go there and address any of this issue, that sad incidents, is take out that crosswalk. So that's how we decided to make out that crosswalk out. It, it, it might feel like you hurt in your leg and you put a bandit in your forehead, but the thing is, since the whole process is proactive and reactive, that's how that decision has been made.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I, it's funny, I had a convers- a funny conversation with a constituent who's a, you know, very strong bike ped advocate, and they were telling me how they use that crosswalk, and they stare down the cars, and they're very aggressive, and I'm like, "I get it." But we don't want someone doing that necessarily when they're with a kid, or have a kid, you know, so, right. So it was just, we identified dangerous pedestrian infrastructure, and that's why-
Staring probably can work in your neighborhood street, but when your corridor has 29,000 traffic-
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets really difficult.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Thank you. Yeah, so I guess, I guess just one thing I wanted to let you all do, since you, is, is to just go down for each of you, in your various departments, you know, what, what for you feels so far, I mean, and this is just the first year, right? So what feels so far like the best outcome of being involved in this Vision Zero project?
I can start. I think the fatal crash response team has been really impactful, just having better communication across departments. And this is something that's not established in a lot of cities in the country, so I think it's something innovative that we're doing, and I'm hoping that it, I think it's already paying off, but I hope it continues to pay off.
For me, it has been the collaboration that we've had within the Budget Engagement Subcommittee, and I think that's for a few reasons. One is, while I have said that we cannot design or engineer our way to complete roadway safety, we know that that absolutely is a part of the solution, and that, you know, while our traffic calming program, our neighborhood traffic calming program is a very popular program, we know that there are higher-ticket items that we could be funding. So something that stuck with me from our Complete Streets Advisory Group report, when we were in front of council about a year ago, was where we install upgraded signal infrastructure, we reduce crashes by 33%. That tells me that we need to be upgrading more of our outdated traffic signals, and we need money to be able to do that. And so being able to work with our colleagues in the Office of Management/Budget, our Grants Department, to talk about how we do that better, faster, quicker, scaling up, you know, having the dollars and the resources to do it is absolutely part of the process. And that's been a game changer, I think, for DOMI in year one, is that those conversations have happened, and we'll be delivering more projects as a result.
I will bring two things here. The first thing is, the collaboration that we are having now with our state partner, our MPO, our public safety friends, our Parking Authority, we never had those connections before this Vision Zero movement. It was a, we, we had those connections, but not the level that we are having at this moment. It was a huge help for us, and the other thing is, the way we utilize this momentum, and the administration helped us to recruit more in-house staff, that was a big help for us. The amount of project that you are seeing, that city is delivering, a major reason is our in-house capacity. Any given time, whenever we are doing those small-scale work, $5,000 to $10,000, if we lash it out to outside consultant, that we are doing in-house. Each of the planning work that we are doing, whether it's a Stanton Avenue work that we completed, we are going to have more projects- we completed, we are going to have more projects coming in this year in the District Three. We are doing all those in-house work that is saving around $50,000 to $60,000 on average. We do a lot of signal work in-house that many community have to hire outside consultant. And the amount of money we use just for construction, they use it for design alone. So using this momentum and hiring those staff in and the way we are doing all those project very efficient and cheap way, I feel like is a huge win for the Vision Zero program. And I do feel like it will, we will see a lot more benefit coming in, in the coming years because of this in-house staff capacity, we were able to build up with the movement of Vision Zero.
And I would double down on what Panini said, with the collaboration aspect of it, just working, working with subject matter experts on the various topics that we need to address makes the job that much more easier. For, a good example was today, we were in a, a meeting and Donna was there and she brought up in the meeting how she wanted to address certain aspects of crossing. I was like, oh, I know the perfect meeting for you. And I told her about today's meeting. And then I also told her about another meeting that we'll have to, just to talk about crossing. And so it makes it that much more easier just to have the subject matter experts in the room. And then the documentation, going through the memorandum and the documentation that Stephanie's put together for our group, it, looking at the numbers, it makes it all worth it. It shows us what we've been doing for the last year and how, how much work we have, how much progress we have made and how much progress we will make. So that makes it much more rewarding.
I feel like everybody's going to say the same thing. But I think what I would say is it's, it's, it is all of the collaboration. And I think the collaboration as a model really for other places where we have to try to build the same kinds of teams to solve the problem. So I mean, you know, concretely, when people start to work like this with PennDOT with one another, then we can make a real plan for that, you know, when you're talking about the bus stop and we move it to the signalized intersection or what, it's not just that we do that there, it's that we are tying that to the changes that are coming at the Squirrel Hill interchange, right? So that we are, well, how to put this? We're doing the kind of long-range planning, which is not about having a vision document and hoping, but because we all know each other's brains well enough now, we can sketch those plans in reality, we can plan the money for them, we can do so much more with the resources that we have because we've collaborated. And for that reason, we treat this group a little bit like a look and see for other groups. Come and watch and see how these folks are doing it, figure out how to dig in in your own areas and, and, and we will, we go a lot farther, a lot faster and, you know, get our heads like, not so much in the clouds in terms of long-range planning, but actually the kind of nitty-gritty of it. Are you going to talk about neighborhood guards or not?
You can.
So I just, it just, you know, in the area of, you know, bring people in and talk to them about what are your obstacles to doing this right? With our crossing guards, you know, we have more slots for crossing guards than we have crossing guards. And when we talk to people, why are you not crossing guard? You know, the way that the seniority system worked in the contract is everybody with seniority picks first, and then if you don't have seniority, you go to the place nobody else picked. But maybe you are a neighbor who would be perfectly happy to be at an intersection. I live in, I don't know, wherever I live, Lawrenceville, and I would cross there, but I'm not getting in a car, I don't have a car, to go and be at the empty spot in Carrick. And so what Donna and her guards did was to bargain into the contract, a different kind of guard, which is called a neighborhood guard. So city guards who want to do all of that and they go and they take there can do that. But if there is a place where Donna has evaluated and said, we could use a guard here and no city guard takes it, then it's possible for her to go and recruit right out of the neighborhood or you can recruit out of your neighborhood or, you know, you can recruit out of your neighborhood and say, hey, we've got a spot now, we've got budget for it. And if there's somebody who would like to work the early hours and cross the kids and then come back later and work the hours. So there, look, see? So, so, and I just, I just want, it's, it's that, you know, to just really dig in with people and talk to them about how do we solve the problem and then solve it has been like, you know, super rewarding and everyone can learn from it.
Can I just say congratulations? Because that has been a complaint for 10 years. Thank you. That is amazing. That is amazing, amazing work. That has been an unfixable problem for a decade, that people, there have been empty seats. I remember we, you know, we were trying to get a crossing guard 10 years ago on Butler Street at Arsenal, and that was one of the problems. Like there hadn't been a new hire of crossing guards forever because of this unsolvable problem that you've just solved. And so we were lucky to get like the first hire ever and to get a crossing guard there because again, you know, that's a K through five, they're, you know, five-year-olds trying to cross a PennDOT street, right? It's very dangerous. So, yeah, it's a very, it's a horrible intersection. So it's a, that is, that is magnificent. So I think we all should do like advertising campaigns as council members that you can apply to be a crossing guard and stay in your neighborhood because that has been the obstacle for a decade, maybe longer. That's a decade as long as I've been aware of it.
It has.
Yes.
It has, it really has. The other thing though, that precipitated this neighborhood guard is we, about two years ago, eliminated the requirement of a driver's license in a car. And with that happening, that eliminated a lot of people who would want this job. And I do have people who use PRT. I have, I have guards that, that are up in Northview Heights who are over in Squirrel Hill. That's where they bid on their spot and they take PRT every day, back and forth. So that's, it's, it's moving forward, trying to eliminate the obstacles of why people don't want this job. I mean, it's the best job ever. And for somebody who's retired, it's really the best job ever because it gets you up in the morning, it gets you moving, you go do your corner for maybe two. Some of my corners are three hours. Some of my corners have more than probably 20 buses. Up on the north side, there's some really active corners. So it just depends, but then you have the middle of the day to schedule your doctor's appointments or run your errands. And then you go back, get the kids off the bus, say hello, and, and you go home. No paperwork, no hassles, you know, and, and no supervisor that's breathing down your neck every day because you're on the corner by yourself. So.
I'm just checking to make sure the camera was on you. I think we could just cut there and just put that on. We've got our television commercial right there, we're going to put it up on social media.
It is the best job, it is.
Appreciate it.
It is.
I know, my staff is going to be applying now.
I just wanted to say that it was great being a part of this committee for the Parking Authority to be at the table, have a seat at the table, just to see what other city entities are doing and working with everybody. It's been great and I'm looking forward to it in the future.
So actually, since, just quickly, because we haven't really heard, so are there, because I know that it's been a challenge, right? With, with enforcing like people parking on sidewalks, sort of at non-metered, right? Non-metered spots. Do you have any, any comments on that or forward-looking on how we might be able to do a little bit more of that type of enforcement through the Parking Authority?
Hopefully with the advancements in automated enforcement, as that comes with the new systems that we may be getting in the future, hopefully that we can work on those different types of parking situations as that comes to light.
Great, great. So anyone else have any last questions or? Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Okay. So what, everybody talked about collaboration, and that's incredible, that these folks all came together, but nobody talked about each person's expertise sitting around this table in Vision Zero. And really and truly, that's what I think makes this group, a group that can make changes for the future safety of, of the people in Pittsburgh, whether they're residents, whether they're visitors. But each person and their expertise and they're willing to share and come together and talk about stuff is fabulous. And I don't think that you guys know how well you do your job and you don't even know you do it. So that's it.
I just had two, just quick questions. The first one primarily for the public, can you share some examples of what the community-led traffic calming interventions might look like?
Yeah, so some of the things I think that you can expect to look forward to will be things like, what type of planter can I place? How close does it need to be from the intersection? Some of the other things we've talked about, Stephanie, if you can help me.
Yeah, I think we've talked about like physically painting, things like that. If we have cones we can use or sandwich boards we can use, again, bringing that back. Just like very quick things that we can do that aren't going to require them to like bolt in the flex post.
Yeah, no construction, no cutting, sawing, yeah. Everything sort of surface placement.
Awesome. And, and then my last question was around the automated speed enforcement. Is there, is there any current legislation in Harrisburg right now and what, like steps are being taken? Because it's something that I, I'm really interested in. And we actually, at, at our meeting this morning, talked about how there's a growing, you know, hunger to be more visible in Harrisburg as a body. And we're starting to put together our list of asks, and this would be on my list that I would, you know, share with the members that we need to ask for, obviously more funding for public transportation as well. But, but, but is there a current status of where this is among your group and, you know, what would be the next steps? And how can we, you know, kind of tap in to this effort as well and, and take this to Harrisburg? Because I think this is something, because we know, you know, we don't have, you know, 1,300, you know, police officers like we did like in the 80s or 90s, like when, you know, when I was a kid. And, you know, we, you know, there's only just so much, you know, physical enforcement that human beings can do. But if we had automated speed enforcement, I think that would go a long way to behavioral changes. Someone knows that there's an invisible eye in the sky, so to speak, you know, watching them go 60 miles an hour down Butler Street, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not quite sure if somebody else knows they can answer for me, but I can check if there's currently legislation. Last, we had been involved, only Philadelphia got authorized in that legislation and they only got authorized for five locations. So there's been some resistance in the state legislature to automated speed enforcement for various reasons, but we would appreciate collaboration there for sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Thank you to all the panelists.
No? Okay, great. Well, yeah, so just, you know, for, for the public, please slow down. Everyone driving fast and not paying attention is costing us a lot of money. I know a lot of people say, whoa, you're spending money on these, you know, traffic calming. Well, yeah, it's, it's important. I don't know, maybe we should start the 25 mile an hour challenge and put like a little sticker on your speedometer there, right at 25 and, you know, get the feeling for what it feels like. Thank you all so much. This is such a fantastic program and just all the work that you're doing around slowing folks down and keeping kids safe. It's something that's very dear to me and I know to, to other members here and so, so many, so many folks in the public, whether it's parents, whether it's transit riders, whether it's cyclists, right? We really, we, we want Pittsburgh to be a place that you, you know, that you feel comfortable and safe getting around, you know, without a car. So thank you all very much. Thanks, oh, I guess.